The agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there are no adjustments to this agenda.
Any announcements of action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I have no final action to report from closed session.
Okay. All right. See, public appearances, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right. Blah, 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 three minutes. Anybody like to speak? Okay, moving on to the next. I don't want to bore you with C2, so we're going to move right on into special recognitions. And again, we would appreciate you staying until the end tonight, so. So, D1. What we're going to do is bring everybody up. So kids, please all come up here to the front, to the dais.
Yeah. As well as their coaches if they are present.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to follow out your name and then just step over here. I might give you your addition today. Okay, all right.
Yes, feel free to take photos or video from close around the dais.
All right. So. For your accomplishments, as member of the Imperial High School Varsity Boys Soccer Team. And in recognition of your achievements as the CIF San Diego Division Five Soccer Champions for the 2022 season, congratulations, guy, very much. It was awesome. Friend of mine works for me, and he lives in Somerton, Arizona. And I guess San Luis is really good, and their soccer team. I told you guys, Tom, you couldn't hold our game. So, okay. Follow. Okay, Manuel. Okay, Justin. Ivan. Chau. Not here?
Oh, man, busted.
You know what? What was that number? How many has got it? Three? Three? I think number four got 50 bucks. All right. All right. So, Gonzalez? Yeah, you know what? That was number six. I think he had a hundred. Did him knock on the door? Either. Oh, man. Baseball? Baseball's good. William? On the side by side?
I could do that.
We could do that. I learned to roll over now, so we can try those. Okay, Daniel. Or take. Dan, Damian. Leonardo. Okay, Sebastian. Nathan. There we go. Joshua. Okay, now, I'm terrible. J D H U. Oh, there we go. Diego. Another Diego. Aw, baby. Daniel Cardona. Daniel? That's basketball team? Somebody got that mixed in. That's me. Rich? Yes. Everybody, everybody get yours?
Yeah, that's not me.
All of them? How many of you guys are seniors? Two? All right, so means next. Don't take a picture, take a new picture on your phone. Oh, absolutely.
Stand up for us.
Okay. Girls' Basketball Team, come on. Hey, you're all up here? Okay. This is for your accomplishments, your accomplishments as member of the Imperial High School Varsity Girls' Basketball Team. And in recognition of your achievements, State CIF Southern Region Champions for 2022 season. Congratulations. I always said I'm playing on NBA basketball. It was pretty cool. I saw you guys, that would be really cool. Did anybody, like, any legislators come to watch your game or anything like that? I always knew they're not worth a crap. Okay. Amelia. Bailey? She can't. Someday you're going to go blind like me. Georgia? Marion? Yeah. Melanie? Sierra? Adriana? Well, that's good. Helena? Jessica? Angeline? Those are coaches. Okay, Rich? Last but not least, Daniel. Smile, you're on TV. Yeah, we got a fine TV. Thank you so much. Big round of applause.
Yes, those are the ones.
Mr. Mayor, this is fourteen months.
Sure. Absolutely.
Check, check, Tom. Um, thank you for the recognition. Uh, my name's Daniel Cardona. I'm an assistant with Coach Ponchioni here with the girls' basketball team. And I also want to acknowledge you guys, whether you guys know and if you're aware, you guys played a big role in this. A lot of these girls here started playing basketball when they were in like third, fourth, fifth grade. And it goes back to your joint use facility that you entered into with the school district, the Frank Wright Gym. And I want to acknowledge and give a lot of, I mean, a lot of credit and a lot of thanks to Amber here because I would be knocking on Amber's door every summer trying to get access to that gym. And that you guys ran the city program and it was always a coordination between working with the school district and working with you guys to work with us, to try to build up the numbers. And so if you remember, a few years ago, a lot of these girls were part of that program. And so I want to acknowledge you guys and thank you guys for supporting the youth programs because these kind of opportunities, they don't just happen that one year. They take a long time. And a lot of these girls benefited from you guys investing in such facilities and supporting crazy coaches like us that want to try to like get in there any chance we can. I mean, so just to, just to give you a hint, some of these girls were coming in to practice from like 6:37 in the afternoon or in the evening to about 8:39 because the city was running your programs. But Amber was kind enough to say, well, if you run the program and open up to everyone citywide, I'll let you in there and you can bring your girls in. And I said, deal. And so, yeah, you guys have been a big part of it, so thank you, guys. You know, before basketball, I was involved with a lot of softball. You guys did a lot of, you supported us a lot there with some of your fields out here and let me on that field along. And those girls, when they made it to the high school, they were in the open division and never made it to a CIF championship game, but they were in the toughest division. This was the 2016, 2017 years. So your continued support and investment in these types of facilities and programs for the youth, they do pay dividends. And like you said, a lot of these girls, well, all these girls got to play on an NBA court. So a lot of that has to do with what you guys done as well, so thank you.
Okay. Daniel. Thomas. Come on. Okay, now. Mrs. Spence, tell them, what did you spell? What was the big word that?
I spelled the word post haste.
Okay, fire it off.
P O S T H A S T E, post haste.
We were debating back there whether I could spell cat. Congratulations. And I'm going to read here. Recognition of your accomplishments as the Seventeenth Annual Imperial County Office of Education Spelling Bee Champion. Wish you the best of luck in competing in the Scripps National Competition in Washington, DC. This is my. Thank you. I'll do it one time. We'll work them both. There you go, Marco. Thank you for being.
Daniel. Daniel.
What did you do? Why do we have you?
Could you hand it off for the staff coach?
I must have turned it off.
Yeah, Marco, I would be the soccer coach here.
Stop this thing just from popping. Pictures, we can get pictures right now. We find where to. Yeah, it's going to be. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay, don't go anywhere, it's going to be real fun. Okay, just kidding. If you'd like to stay, we would love you to be here.
We'd like to do a shameless plug. We have a lot of athletes in the, in the building right now. And on cityofimperial.org, we do have the rec leaders positions open. So if anyone wants a summer job, it's open and ready to be, we'll be hiring in May.
So the, so the rec leagues come full circle now. You guys get to help facilitate that if you're interested.
One thing quickly for the coaches and anyone involved with all these students doing phenomenal job. I gotta say, it's, it's really an honor to see our kids doing so well in this town. And it's, it's a testimony of the coaches taking the time. And it's a lot of time because back when I was in school, coaches didn't spend, not that I'm talking bad about, it was just a different time and a curriculum. But today, the kids are, are more active and playing longer and doing more sports, but it makes them extremely good. And to think that our small community keeps showing up in CIF championships, that's a testimony to the coaches and the parents and our community because it's just, you see it more and more. Every year we see Imperial on the radar and it's pretty cool considering how many cities are in the state and we're there. So again, another huge round of applause for all of you. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to, okay, D4 Autism Awareness Fair.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council and, and members of the community that are still here, I'd like to introduce James Gonzalez, who's the president of Autism Support Imperial County. This is going to be a very brief presentation, but we wanted to give you an overview of what to expect at the inaugural Autism Awareness Fair. And FAIR is an acronym for Fun Awareness Information and Recreation. That will be taking place this Saturday at Eager Park at April 9th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Want to say anything and then I can click through the slides.
I don't want to say anything.
Okay. So it's going to be a lot shorter than I thought.
So first of all, you know, for the City of Imperial to come up to us, this is, the word we like to use a lot is awesome. We spell it differently, A U S O M E. You've heard it a lot around here before. This event in itself is going to be awesome. This is, you know, a one of a kind event to include the entire community, to be able to have, as it says, fun information for all the parents of, of all special needs. We're bringing out vendors for intellectual and developmental disabilities. I have Joab Gonzalez here from San Diego Regional Center who helps direct all those services. I hope he'll have a moment to, to speak himself. I'm putting him on the spot. Awareness is, is always key. You see me come up here every year when, when they do the proclamations. Unfortunately, when you guys did it the other time, there's several city council meetings that happen the same exact day you are. I have to spread out like butter. But, you know, it, it's one of those things that we enjoy, we love, we want to make sure that everybody's aware of, of how autism affects everyone. We've had a slogan for many years that it's, it's you know someone with autism and Autism Support of Imperial County can help. And what we mean by that slogan is that even if you really don't know somebody, you do, it's just indirectly. You know, you might have a friend of a friend who you've hung out with, who has somebody on the spectrum that's a family member. So it, it's one of those things that, it does really affect an entire community. And now with the City of Imperial basically bringing the entire community together, this all started from last year when we did with San Diego Regional Center, drive-by Easter egg hunt. That sounds really bad, doesn't it? But that's what you could do during a pandemic, you know, just shoot up a bunch of Easter eggs. And it, the City of Imperial came out and, you know, it was one of those things, we had the police department come out, we were really appreciative. They were out there handing out eggs. A lot of our, our, our members were handing out eggs, San Diego Regional Center was, was hanging out eggs. And we did a lot of this over at the San Diego Regional Facility. And your team came up to us this year and say, hey, you know, basically we want to take this to the next level. And not only that, we want to do it every year. And we're like, you know, in shock and amazement and just in awe. And we're excited. We've given the ability for those special needs families to sign up. The registration's closed now, but we've allowed them to sign up on our dime. We're going to give them free meal coupons. So that way, when they come, they don't even have to worry about pretty much a meal. We're going to give them up to four meal coupons to feed their families. The, the, I mean, like I said, I, what can I say? It, it's all in all, we've got, you know, it's all there in the title, you know? So it's, it's self-explanatory. I'm sure I've explained it well enough before I bore you guys to death. But I don't know if Joab would like to say anything. I'm sure he doesn't, but I'm going to put him on the spot anyways.
Good evening. I am going to be very, very brief. I'm just wanted, my name is Joab Gonzalez again. San Diego Regional Center, yeah, there's no relationship here. Other than the strong partnership that we have, San Diego Regional Center, Regional Manager was recently appointed and it's been an honor. There's somebody in this building that trained me at San Diego Regional Center. Her name is Yvette Lemos, who's right behind me. And I'm very grateful she did a really good job because I got promoted. So thank you, Yvette. And I just want to thank you for the, for the opportunity to have this event on Saturday. I want to show appreciation, not just to the city, but also to the Autism Support Group represented here by Mr. James Gonzalez. And the strong partnerships, if you guys just found out, the amazing things that have been going on because of the partnerships that we have, we're a small community. So when we come together and we join forces, we do great things. Millions of PPE materials were distributed during the pandemic to Imperial County families who have people with developmental disabilities. And that was a result of the partnerships that we have. That's all I have for you. I know it's going to be, you, you have a meeting before you guys. So thank you so much and we look forward to continuing to partnering up with, with you, the city and our partners. Thank you.
So just really quick, what we, what you can expect at the. All is resources that were just explained. We will also have our splash pad, our libraries on the spectrum will also be participating. We'll have a family fun zone that will have bounce houses, we'll have food trucks, games and activities. What you see there is a bingo card that upon arrival, that those registered with Autism Support of Imperial County, they will be able to collect various, it's almost like a scavenger hunt, go around the event and, and be able to collect all of the nine squares there and receive a prize. That will be excited. We'll also have our Easter egg hunt and we have a live entertainment lined up. What's also important to note with anyone tuning in, we'll also have decompression zones throughout the event and council chambers will also be a decompression zone. So I say that for anyone that might not be aware of the event and they're just now learning, we will have those available and, and resources. So we're very excited. Again, this is our inaugural event and we're looking forward to everyone coming out and participating in that again from 1:00 to 5:00 Saturday here, here at Eager Park. And we couldn't do it without our community partners. We have our libraries on the spectrum. Faith and Wellness Fitness is sponsoring the family fun zone with obstacle course and bounce houses, San Diego Regional Center, Friends of Imperial Parks, Imperial County Fire, our Imperial Police Department and our home of Guiding Hands. So those are our partners and we're encouraging everyone to contact us if they have any questions or if they want to participate next year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So everyone, this is the point in that meeting that's awkward and you're trying to figure it out. So it would be the mass exodus moment to take, or you will be in for the rest of it.
I'm so disappointed. I was hoping everybody would stay.
But if you want a civics lesson, feel free to stay.
The mayor's giving extra credit. And then there was crickets.
We'll surprise him in, we'll surprise him in class. It's in, it's in there. And.
Nobody wants to stay?
At least none of the department heads got up.
Amber's all like, you mean, I could have left?
Wow, okay. Let's move on to D. Now, let's move on to E. Consent agenda.
Make a motion over the consent agenda.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Let's move on to F, action items. F one, discussion action, Morning Star Subdivision Heritage at Dahlia Ranch LLC.
Good evening, council. The item before you is for the encroachment permit application for Morning Star subdivision for the installation of inlet connection to the new side drain. This is for the Unit One for the retention basing. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments?
On real quick, I'm looking at the map. The new side drain is across the road. So they're gonna go under the road?
Oh, we're not. The only, it's a hundred and sixty feet from the retention basing to the inlet. It's just, it's east of the canal. We're not, it's, that's an existing, the one under the canal, it's an existing IID.
You're gonna go to there?
Just to the, yes.
Okay. Because I was having a hard time trying to figure out where the location is.
So in the attachment number three?
Because I thought that drain was on the, on the west side.
West side of the canal, yes.
So.
We are only.
We're building on the east side.
On the east side, we're only connecting to the, to the existing pipe on the east side.
That's already there.
That's already there. Correct. We're not doing any, any.
That was where I was, it was kind of throwing me off. Okay.
Make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote. So can we send something to the state in the future that we got like a total of one point two inches of rain in six years and we have to have these damn things?
Motion passes five zero.
Make a motion to send it.
Hold on for a second. I'm just asking that question.
No, send the letter to them.
Oh, okay. You responded. I want somebody to respond. Okay. F two, discussion, action, Morning Star Subdivision Heritage at Dahlia Ranch LLC.
On this item, staff seeking authorization to, for, to sign an encroachment permit, but this will be for the improvements on Nickel Road. This would be for the sidewalks, the pavement, and waterline and streetlights. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments?
Couple of questions. Who's encroachment permit is it?
Hey, so we'll sign the encroachment permit, but all of the work will be under the developer.
The developer. So they're gonna be doing the work.
They're gonna be doing the work. We're not, it's not any cost on, on.
So the, reading this, I was looking at that and it said, the city will take over the ownership of O and M of set improvements of their construction.
Right, it's, okay.
So are we gonna be maintaining that?
We're gonna be maintaining, as any other, accepting the roads and we will maintain it.
Okay, so just the road, not? The way I'm reading is we're gonna maintain their drain or.
No, we're not. No, I do apologize, but we're not gonna maintain any other IID facilities. This is just the road improvements.
Okay, because that would have been my next question to Jackie is do we have the, the equipment to be able to maintain those facilities?
We're not.
You can see my concern there. I was, okay, so I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Please vote.
It scared me there for a little bit.
I was starting to get nervous.
You're on your toes.
Yeah. I'll start saying no. Hold that encroachment permit for, you know, three hundred and sixty-four days.
Okay, F three.
Motion passes five zero.
Discussion, action, replacement of park amenities at Savannah Ranch Victoria Park.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff has identified the park picnic tables and benches at both Savannah Ranch Park and Victoria Park in need of replacement. The current park amenities are over ten years old and are in poor condition. Staff is seeking city council's approval to purchase twenty-six new thermoplastic coated metal picnic tables and benches to replace the existing.
Questions, comments?
For approval?
Second.
And motion second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Onto F four, discussion, action, and urgency ordinance of the city of Imperial, amending the codified ordinances related to the use and possession of fireworks.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm gonna address F four and subsequently a little bit of F five as well, since they, they do kind of go hand in hand. But before you, you do have ordinance eight sixteen to be adopted on an urgency basis. This is impacting the existing enforcement action, if you will, of illegal fireworks. This does not impact the sailor use of safe and sane as the council is designated. But it does add a social host component. And just what that means for the public is that if this were to be adopted this evening on an urgency basis, it would be enacted within, effective immediately. I'm looking at the city attorney for that. Yes, effective immediately. So in time for some of the upcoming holidays where we've seen the increase in use of illegal fireworks within the city of Imperial. In the event that our law enforcement is contacted and called to a residence and it's, the evidence is, is there and I must stress a citizen is willing to sign a citizen's arrest, the host of that gathering can in fact be cited for the illegal use of that. And it doesn't have to immediately reflect the person that may have set off the fireworks. So that's what this does, both in F four and F five. One is we are asking to enact on an urgency basis because we are anticipating the use of illegal fireworks within the city. And I'll stand for any questions or our city attorney can, can answer to some of the legalities of what might result in the enforcement.
I just said, I'm glad to see some. I'll make the motion then.
Motion passes five zero.
F five, discussion, action, and ordinance of the city of Imperial amending the codified ordinances. Oh, wait a second. Is that combined one or two?
I, I think the, to clarify on the motion, did the motion include both items one and two within it? Yes.
Okay. So then, then we'll do the same for F five then as well.
Yes, we, we can if that is the intended motion. And, and just to address and reiterate what was mentioned as part of F four, this is just on a, on a permanent basis that this would be adopted. But followed, following normal proceedings where we would have a first reading and then a second reading and, and a summary published.
Hey, just to add, the fireworks in question here are not the ones that are being sold within the city. It's, it's the big fireworks that go up in this.
That is correct.
Sky, go boom.
Yes. So, so our ordinance does allow for three nonprofit organizations under permit pulled with our Community Development Department to sell safe and sane as defined by the, the state of California. So those are still allowed and permitted for, for the sale and use within the city of Imperial. It is the illegal fireworks that this would affect or allow for enforcement.
Uh, ordinance.
Eight seventeen.
There you go, eight seventeen. The, prepare the summary for ordinance eight seventeen also for publication purposes.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. F six, discussion, action, declaration of surplus items at Imperial Public Library.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, our photos of the libraries, all the mismatched shelving that once was in the library. Since then, it's been replaced with the new shelving that you authorized. And so the department is requesting the Imperial City Council to consider declaring the department's current old inventory as surplus. If declared, the items will be sold or the items that are in disrepair will be just discarded.
Second.
Yeah, the motion, and that will be for the declaration of shelves.
And the other.
And both of them, okay. Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. We're gonna adjourn the city council meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. Thank you.